The. Sorry Denise. Good evening on this very warm evening, the Board of Selectmen regular meeting Monday, July 8, 2024, commencing at 6:00 PM. On all 108 Main Street Falls Village, Connecticut, in person and via Zoom. The agenda, there's just a couple of things that I want to add to the agenda that came in a little bit later. Okay. If we could add to the Selectman's report. As seven M. ARPA funds to the Northwest Connecticut Transit District. And if we could also add that. As nine D, look at it, and after the planet, to do it an act upon it. I'll take a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Uh, I would also like to add as seven. Let's see. Uh, we, uh, seven I. We have the federal bridge grant regarding Cardinal, I'd like to add that also. To our new business, uh, as nine E. And we'll look at that and look at the line that's coming from and probably recommend it. To the Board of Finance and eventually to a town meeting. Uh, so that was my motion to make, uh. The federal bridge grant with Cardinal Engineering, nine E in new business, I'll take, uh. That would be my motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
Also, I'd like to add seven N. In the Selectman's Report. Which is the planning and zoning fees ordinance. And I would also like to add that as nine F, consider and act the prime. That would be the motion.
And so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, seven O. Would be the Vision Zero Council, having to do with the Public Act 23-116. And that would be my motion to put that in on seven O and the Selectman's Report.
What was that for Dave?
Uh, Vision Zero Council, yep.
So moved. Second.
With favor? Seven P. On the Selectman's Report. Uh, just, uh, the 107 Main Street roof. As came the recommendation from the Infrastructure Committee. And I would like to also make that nine G. On the new business to consider an active sign.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Sorry.
And seven Q in the Selectman's Report. Our transfer station report that came in, uh. Late, uh, this morning. So, uh, I'd like to add that to the Selectman's Report.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
Okay. All right. Public comment.
Eileen, uh, from Sal, Travel Road. Um, I'm here to speak on Liz first, could not be here tonight to give an update on grants that were found and shared with the Board of Selectmen and respective recipients. To refresh memories, I will read what was sent. Listed below are several grants that may be a wonderful, uh, may be a wonderful opportunity for your organizations, the town, and individuals, families, social services. We included so many of you because some may cross over from town to nonprofit, commission to nonprofit, and possibly a collaboration between two or more groups. We have listed the dates that are due in the headline. This is a wide spectrum of interest, arts, education, municipality, home repairs in rural communities, cybersecurity, et cetera. We have also included the grant guidelines for the Northwest Connecticut Community Foundation, an incredibly supportive foundation whose president Guy Rivezi. Is a longtime Claus Village resident. Some wonderful opportunities at the NCCF. Some are due in a couple of weeks, but others are due as late as next year. Please, please let us know two things, do you need assistance with the application? Whether or not you are going to apply. Simply send us back an email letting us know that the goal is not to let an opportunity pass by. And some of the, um, grant opportunities are for 2025 summer camps due 2025, pass to families who may need some assistance. Nominating one of our fabulous teachers for a $10,000 grant. Um, due February 2025. Uh, also doing February 2025, planning and techno- technological assistance grants for nonprofits. Do seven nineteen this month, grant security, um.
Cybersecurity.
Cyber security, yeah, she said, sorry, for municipalities, I guess. And August 1st touring. Touring Artist Grant. Maybe COM. C O M, Connecticut Humanities Program Guides, municipal and nonprofit for community programs, that's due August 2nd and November 1st. And, um, there's more, there's more, I can just. Should I read them all or?
Yeah, I think we want to include, I think we, we have.
Yeah.
All of them on the email, and I know the one that caught my eye was, and thank you Eileen, and thank Liz, uh, although she couldn't be here, the one of course that caught my eye was the cybersecurity, as a matter of fact. Uh, July 1, I was on with Demus regarding that one. Oh, so we're going to be applying for that, who knows whether we'll get it?
There's a big one for the, the USD home repairs with.
And that's the one I sent to you, Chris.
Yeah.
That's the one I sent to you, okay?
Why I look at my house lately?
A lot of those historic pieces, right? They're now familiar.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll talk to the.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anything else?
Great, well, building street, um, so I'm gonna follow up, last month I asked about job descriptions, employee handbook, I know you're kind of following, it sounded like to CAG. Perhaps.
Right now, I'm actually working through CAG and working with CCM both, okay, on the, uh, not so much the job descriptions, but, uh, because as you know, all those jobs are by statute. But what we're working on is an employee handbook, and I've also enlisted to help when we get a chance to sit down with Dan Silverman, who is, would be one of our, um. Well, we know his background, okay, uh, as a labor attorney, and I asked him if when we had something completed, we could actually, uh, sit down and do it. I know in speaking to a lot of people who've put these together, uh, there is a principle here of keeping it shorter and keeping it simpler rather than voluminous, so that's where we are.
So do you think that, um. Well, I guess it's a question that I'll ask, do you think, well, let me ask you, do you think that should be, uh, or? An item for the agenda moving forward, whole business, or do you want?
No, I think what we'll do is we'll, we'll keep it on, my hopes is, uh, my sincere hope is to have it done by the summer, as you know, we talked about this for about six years prior, uh, when I came initially onto Board of Selectmen and we really got nothing moving. In any direction, and I can tell you, having attended a number of conferences and so forth, uh, we're. We're not an outlier in this, but, uh, again, we need to get it together and, uh, actually, uh, put it together and have a few people, including our town attorney, actually look at.
Thank you. Then capital reserve accounts, I brought it up last month in about the board of finance as well, as far as. When we might think that we make the expenditure, in other words, another schedule, schedule of when we anticipate our purchase, what their anticipated purchase price was and how much is it needs to count, kind of in a nice spreadsheet which we've never had. So that everybody can kind of follow along and look at that.
We were going to, uh, well, that's something, I'll, I'll be quite honest with you, I kind of slipped through the cracks there a little bit, I was going to talk with the, uh. Uh, Board of Finance Chairman regarding that, but there, there have been some, uh, things that have happened, so we have not sat down and done that, and I think this was a place where we were going to sit down, the Board of Selectmen. Uh, with, uh, at least the Chairman of the Board of Finance, um, and with the treasurer and try and generate something like that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
So I, I hate to steal your thunder, Dave, I probably might too, but I just want to say thank you guys so much for working with us, um, it's been so wonderful to get, um, issues taken care of. And I'd like to say that it was so wonderful to see in the Lakeville Journal that the sign got painted and we got a, a wonderful little picture taken and Heather got her name in the paper and.
I know Patrick contacted me about that.
So thank you, I thought that was really fantastic to see, um, but I wanted to ask a, a new random question, um, we've got these really cool, uh, light posts now in town and it looks so pretty, um. Is there any ideas or, or Commissioner Root for flags?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Well, great.
I'm, I'm gonna defer to Judy on that one.
It's through the Historical Society.
Awesome.
The same idea as the, um, historic district signs where people can make donations towards the flags, and that's how we raised enough money to get the various flags up. Except for like the fire department, they paid for their own.
Got it. Yeah, I just thought it would be cool because other towns would drive around and they have bunting. Flags, I just thought that would be neat, especially if we do a memorial parade.
Right.
Bring it over here, we could do it all the way through the car show, it would just look really cool for downtown, um, so thank you, I also wanted to say, um. Then I'd like to see the, uh, towns and the Board of Finance's policies, um, posted to the town website so that it can be accessed, I think it is a, a form of public record, so it'd be great to have that be available to everybody. Um, I also wanted to say I support, um, the other tree warden in town and Dusty Blast, as that person, he has agreed to volunteer and take a class and get certified. Um, I also wanted to check on the, uh, progress of the 35 railroad street, and also wanted to see if we could get a meeting for the parking plan, and I'd love to be a part of that meeting. I wanted to show my support to, uh, Liz and the rest of the grant group, I think they're doing wonderful work, and I think that the board should, uh, definitely back them. I wanted to check on the wifi at the transfer station, that seems to be, uh, something that we're still going through, I wanted to support what Greg said about job descriptions and employee handbook of some kind, I think that's important. Um, and then also what Greg said about the, uh, capital accounts with all the finance stuff, I. I'm more curious about how do we decide how much money we're trying to put in and who sort of oversees is, like, do we all sudden maybe wonder need to put more money in because we're a little behind on, uh, a fire truck or a town vehicle, I, I don't know, I, or even the roof project, it do be saving up money, I, I don't know, I just. Thought that we're saving a lot of money and we're asking taxpayers to put in a lot of this money, I, I, I just want some more open transparency, how those decisions or how those accounts are, are being handled. Um, thank you for that, and then, um, I wanted to also support what Doug Coen said at the last meeting about the code of ethics, and I wanted to support that, uh, other boards and commissions are involved in that as well, and Solomon's Fletcher's. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I make comment on the tree ward?
Identify yourself, sir.
Timothy Downs. I think I'm allowed as the tree warden to select a helper. Um, if, if you want a different tree warden, the, the Selectman. Um, I would say, oh, not a point, point one. If Dusty wants to be it, maybe next time he can be appointed.
Thank you, and, uh, which comes to the point, I have not received anything in writing from Dusty. So. At this point.
That's a thing to do, I just wanted to just touch on it a little bit, what Stephen said, in terms of 35 railroads. It's, uh, with all the financial issues that I hear about and see the financial committee's decisions. I wanted to know, more specifically, financials and update, but what is the timeline? What tool is the point person, what are we? What just? Uh, he said, I think we discussed the last two meetings, and the great, I don't know, maybe the answer's been given. Don't you put a less that as the.
Thank you.
Um.
Identify yourself.
Denise Coen, as the, um, Stephen mentioned, um. The policies, made copy, and you have them all. But they haven't been updated since 2017, and as you know, when we've got the board of finance, hand. Notebook of Board of Finance Policy, there was one in there going back to. Chuck Lewis, okay, so where are they?
The policies, actually, right now, we're looking at them Denise, and we haven't brought them up to date, and that is certainly no excuse for them not being moved up, up to date.
No, no, where, where are they, there was nothing in the Board of Finance handbook, policy book.
Uh, they are, they lay with the, I don't, I don't have them, okay, are you talking about Board of Finance policies?
Yeah, Michelle went and got the handbook, the book out of the book, and I mean, one piece of paper in there for.
That's the only one that I'm, I'm aware of.
He put, there's nothing in it.
Yeah, I, I know. And that's why we have to review all these policies, there's a lot that's been handed down just by hearsay and by usage and so on and so forth, and I'm, I'm going to be the first one to admit. That I believe that all those policies lie with the, um. Someone within the Board of Finance has those policies somewhere, okay, and that, the, they should be in the book, uh, I'll be the first to admit it, and this is why we're looking over all our ordinances and all our policies and trying to bring them up to date. Certainly not an excuse, but an explanation of why we need to do this.
There have been several Board of Finance policies that were at that Board of Finance meetings over the last couple of years, you yourself have read too. Where did they come from?
I had those through common usage and I had them from the, from the previous select people.
I said, there's no. It's hard to know how to do your job as a commissioner if someone hasn't called so.
And that's one of the reasons why we're going to set something probably up in August, meeting with all the chairman of all the, um. As you know, by statute, okay, by Connecticut statute, we are, uh, required to meet with all the chairman once a year of all the commissions and boards, so this is the point where we need to bring everything up to date.
Okay, so do you still not want me to put them on the website?
I would wait until we actually clean them up a little bit. But there's no problem with putting them on, but, you know. You might be replacing a few and so on and so forth, and that's why, again, with the ordinances and so forth, we're looking them over, so.
That's your call.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Moving on. Um, approval of pending minutes. June 10th, uh, was our regular meeting, I'll take a motion to accept.
Just a question on.
Yes.
Um, I don't understand under, um, new business at world ordinances. Dave Barger appointed Judy Jacobs as the organizer for all three. I don't know what all three means.
Which one is such an issue?
It's under, um, new, new business app. Ordinances.
All three Selectmen's review. All three Selectmen's review.
For all three Selectmen's review, okay, for we. Um, amend that to clarify that a little bit?
It does say that.
But that's what it says, it just has the organizers for all three, review.
Well, I got you. You thought that Selectmen's Review was the town policies of.
No.
Okay.
I guess.
I'll take a motion to accept the meeting, uh, minutes of June 10th. So.
Of second.
All in favor? All right. Say, the special meeting on June 18th. I'll take a motion to accept those minutes, that's.
So can I second that even though I wrote them?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I second.
All in favor?
All right.
Right, motion to accept the minutes of, uh, June 25th.
I'll make the motion that I wasn't there, so when it comes to the vote, I'll abstain, okay?
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
And one abstention. And Tuesday, um, July 2nd, meeting minutes, I'll take a motion to accept those.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
Thank you. Uh, treasures report, we do not have, as they're collecting all the information and transferring. Playing with the, uh, QuickBooks and so on and so forth. Um, the June 24th. Tax collector's report, we received that today. By email. The, uh, collection rate. At this point. Uh, is ninety point three zero. Does you have a copy of that?
Enough, can I make a copy of that one?
Yes, you can.
We'll have that one.
Oh, you've got it?
Right.
All right. All in favor of receiving the. Tax collector's report, please see the third, well, may I have a, so move, a second. All favor?
Right.
I'm sorry, Judy and Chris?
Yes.
And there's no May treasure support?
No, no mayor treasures, yeah. Communications. I have, uh, four. Letters, one is from, uh, Greenwood's Counseling and Referring, uh, we gave them their, um, annual grant, so they thanked us for it. Um. Something, uh, if you all remember, we had to discover Connecticut Bike Ride, uh, on September 8th. Uh, Sunday, September 8th, uh. We, uh, offered them the green and put up a pop-up tent, uh, and they will be starting the race. Or the ride, I guess it is really not a race, they will be starting from the green. So, uh. That'll be September 8th, uh, 10th, can they ask the all the selectmen to get there and, uh, give a few words?
I love the, I'm all the tone.
Yeah, it's like you and me, Chris.
Shoot a shotgun or something or?
Uh, no, we're not gonna do that. I'll give you, I'll give you a big flag, quicker flag, that's it, okay, um. The, uh, next one is from the Connecticut Council of Municipalities, um. And, uh, as you see up over my left shoulder, there's a new poster having to do with civility at meetings. And, uh, let me just read the letter quick, quickly, dear municipal CEO, CCM and the, uh, Governor M. Jody Rel Center for Public Service. At U-Hart, I've worked with other organizations to promote civil discourse in the public sphere, CCM and the center have co-sponsored workshops on civility in the past. And are now embarking on a campaign to encourage public officials to implement action steps to take conduct. Uh, oh, excuse me, to unduct the public's business without ranker. The steps have been placed into a poster in flyer form, enclosed as poster, please post as you see fit, thank you for, uh, all you do to manage your community and serve your residents while promoting mutual respect. Uh, Ronald Thomas from, uh, the COO of CCM. Last but not least, something we've, we received a little bit earlier today, and something that I'll be speaking with the Rec Commission regarding, um. A letter from one of our residents, Dan Shaw, uh, regarding the pool, um. Sunday afternoon, half the people there were non-residents, uh, of course, they sign in, they pay $5, but. Uh, ineffective town is now running a public pool instead of providing an amenity for the residents who pay taxes. It was unpleasantly crowded and noisy on Sunday, and indeed, a couple of hours I'd been looking forward to, to spending at the pool turned out to be not very relaxing. Um, his suggestion is to charge more, uh, for, uh, out of town residents. Uh, Salisbury is $15 for Town Grove, um. And again, uh, I've been looking forward to a summer relaxing at the pool, seems it may not be possible with all of the, uh, people there. Uh, would we consider changing the policy, and again, I will. Not sure if the Rec Commission had received this, but we'll speak with, uh, Ted on Wednesday night. That's a Rec Commission meeting. And with the rest of the Rec Commission. Um. Selectman's Report, uh, first appointment to the Husak River Commission and Alternate, I've received a letter from, uh, Matt Gallagher. Uh, Steve's leading his position as an alternate, and as you know from last month, we already have, uh. Request from, uh, uh, Wood Sinclair to appoint six clients as alternates. So we'll get to that in new business. Uh, next Appalachian Trailhead Kiosk along Warren Turnpike. Um, do have a mock-up of it here, I think you saw it, Chris, I'm not sure if you saw it, Judy. All right, but it's similar to the one that, uh, is down at the power plant. Uh, using the same material, and they'll be putting it off, I checked with our D2W manager. And, uh, he said it shouldn't present any type of problem with, uh, with snow removal or anything else. Uh, as you all know, milling and resurfacing of Route 7 all the way up to Route 44. Uh, they should have all the milling done now, and they will be paving, um. Starting the 15th and all the way through the 31st. So. Again, that'll be all the way from 63, and for those of you who didn't know, because I've got to admit, the road behind the gas station is State Route 812.
Well. And they had asked years ago.
Yeah.
You know, they did ask the Historical Society for an actual name.
Right.
And we called it Dean Street, but they've never put up any sign.
No, but it's, it's Route 812 and that. I've worked up here for, I started here in 1976, and we just called it Dean Street, so.
And Kane and not, okay.
Yeah, yes, continuation of Barnes Road, yeah. Okay, uh, the Northwest Connecticut Main Street Promise, that's with the, uh, CAG. We had a meeting with them, uh, via Zoom on the 25th, and they will be doing a walkthrough in the town center on July 30th between 1:00 and 3:00. It was a, a really good meeting, uh. With them and what they would like to, uh, look at and what they would like to see and maybe give us a few ideas. Uh, 7E. Aquarian, uh, water quality report, if anyone would like to see that I can reproduce it, but I'm not gonna go through all the numbers and there's. Nothing here that's. Uh, as I read it, uh, that's out of the norm. But again, we will reproduce this and, uh. Have it available. Here at Town Hall. Uh, on July 12th. Judy will be on the America 250 Connecticut Commission Zoom. Okay, uh, again, those of you who may remember, uh, several meetings ago, that in fact, they, uh. Are, uh, getting us ready in the next two years to have a 50-state blowout for America 250. So.
Did they give a tally for that?
Uh, yes, they did, I believe it's 10, I know I have it online.
Wasn't the bicentennial just like not long?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's bad when we can remember, and we weren't kids when it happened. Okay.
Actually, I could buy them.
Okay, uh, seven H, Demus, we, uh, there's a, a cybersecurity incident response plan workshop, I'll be attending that, that'll be August 13th, coming up. I'll be in Litchfield. Uh. Federal Bridge Grant, uh, we'll talk about that later, but it is, um, let me defer to Chris for a moment on that one.
Sure, so, uh, Turner. Meeting with Cardinal Engineering, he made a recommendation to, uh. To us to look at replay, actually replacing the bridge that's on, uh, King Memorial Road, uh. So this, this application for, uh. For the grant. Includes that along with the bridge, uh, at the west end of, uh, the, the two bridges, I think the. Thanks to you. That was, that was complete, right? Yes, it's, yeah, for follow, so this just adds the, the one at King Memorial Road.
Okay, well, what this is, is an application for, for the grants.
For the grants.
Right. For the hundred percent federal grants.
To replace them.
So. Okay. The, uh, transfer station IT needs, okay, um. I am working with Kayla Gordon, who has her team working on the requests, they'll set up. They'll set up the call to review this week sometime. That was from last week, everyone's on vacation and everybody's gone, but we'll be working with Kayla. Um. And I'd like to get a cost to install and then see whether it's cost-effective to actually put it there. Port of Selectman Ethics Review. Okay, what I'm going to do is we have them from some surrounding towns from Salisbury and from Kent. And from Litchfield. But what I'm going to suggest and I will reproduce this for you is the Office of State Ethics. Okay, to look at this one. All right, for all the selectmen before we make any decisions, and I am also gonna suggest, uh. You can do an online course, which I've done already, which is public official and state employee training certification. For the Office of State Ethics, takes you about forty, forty-five minutes complete. Uh, there are some very, very interesting things in there and perhaps it might be most advantageous. To have every chairman of every commission actually take this, and they are willing to set up. A meeting, excuse me, Zoom, if you will, uh, for whomever we want. Okay, in addition to this. So that's coming out of the Office of State Ethics. Also want to point out that we do have a policy. Uh, that was actually signed back in two thousand and three by Lou Timohat Pat McCar. Uh. And let's see what else we got there. I can, right? Okay, anyhow, uh, which is code of conduct and procedures, it kind of um. Kind of uh mirrors a uh an ethics. Uh. Policy, if you will, uh, but not, not. Really close, so it it, but it's worth looking at, and again, I'll reproduce that for you all. The other thing that we have is, well, we're talking about CCM. Um, back in twenty twenty-two, um, they uh started the civility pledge. What I'd like to do, and I'm gonna contact CCM. I think what they uh have no problem with is for us to actually make this hours, giving them some credit that they. In fact, um. Back, uh, created it. What the civility pledge, and again, we should give this to all the commissions. And all the chairman, I pledge to build a stronger and more prosperous community by advocating for civil engagement, respecting others. And their viewpoints and finding outs, excuse me, finding solutions for the betterment of my town or city. So we can uh, again, I'm checking, taking Max Freeman on that, if we can uh steal it. Or utilize it, there's no sense in reinventing the wheel.
You did, can I add while you're on C? There's a training through CCM tomorrow at ten AM.
Yes, on ethics, yes.
Could you all sign on?
Yeah. Thank you. And that's over here. So actually over here, okay. Uh, state cybersecurity grants, uh, as you've heard, as Eileen had read all already, there's a grant out there, um. Last week, there was a uh Region Five Demus Zoom on that. And uh, so we will be applying. We'll see uh how well it goes, but. We'll be applying for it out of this office here. Okay. Uh, old business, thirty-five railroad street update. Want to, oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, added items, I apologize, thank you, thank you. Reading by here, you get lost sometimes, um. I would like to take one thousand dollars of our ARPA funds that have not been allocated yet. And give it to Northwest Connecticut Transit District. Uh, there was a shortfall this year, uh. In transportation for special trips for the senior center. And again, if no one has a problem with that. Uh, we did not contribute any money to them. Uh, because quite honestly, they sent the request in late after we had already completed our. Our budget. So what I'd like to do is, and I think it fits well within uh the ARPA guidelines. I would like to uh, like to send them that money.
So I asked, how much, how much is left in the ARPA? As I, I thought it was dedicated to uh thirty-five railroad, not all of it, no, so what's?
I would have to, I was hoping, I think Michelle is on a, an ambulance call. Uh, she did give me that, and I don't recall, but uh we can also uh table it. Okay, once we get to what?
I think it's important to take care of.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the transit district, but I'm just curious about how much is left.
Okay.
Like bottom.
And we'll be talking about ninety, planning and zoning fees, uh ordinance. I looked at the ordinance the other day, the old ordinance. That's right, we're not even covering our expenses. Um. So uh what what has been proposed uh by the Planning and Zoning uh Board? Is uh the commission, I should say, is um. Actually uh charging more for zoning permits and maps and so on and so forth. Um, I'll give you a copy of this, Denise, published rather than go all through it.
Okay.
Okay. Please make a note of that, and this will have to be uh. Uh. We'll discuss this, but um it needs to be uh acted upon, and we are, we're gonna have to bring this to town meeting, town meeting. Okay, Vision Zero Council, uh, there's been a lot of talk about speeding in the area, uh especially Belvedere Street. And I will tell you, I was all gung ho about Vision Zero. All right, before the statute came out. I'll be the first to admit it. Until you hit this part of the statute. A sworn member or employee of the municipality's police department. Or an employee of the municipality as designated by the traffic authority. Dow review and approve the the reported images before citation is mailed to the owner of such motor vehicle.
Hmm.
That kind of wipes us out. That type of technology, okay, I spoke with uh. Uh, actually, uh Marty Lindemeyer down at Kent's. And he has a resident trooper. Who will be reviewing, he's actually looking at putting through, and I understand that Salisbury is also looking at putting. Speed cameras, but they have resident trooper also, so they would be the ones would be reviewing the cam.
Can we collaborate with another town and?
Captain designated, Salisbury Falls Village line.
The, 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 the problem is, we lost us at, I have a meeting with the new troop commander. Not this week, the following week, um. Would cost us some money. Okay, to utilize their, their time and so on and so forth. Uh, but again, a lot of this has to do if you have eight hours of tape. Yeah. So. Again, and I'll be, be, I'm not against hiring a resident trooper.
No.
So, why are you needing resident trooper?
You need someone in law enforcement, sworn law enforcement, now I'm, I'm just kidding about, please, kidding about the resident trooper, okay?
But isn't the first selectman considered the law enforcement official of our town?
Right, but here's the question, are we gonna, are we going to have the first selectman, I'm just speaking for myself. Review eight hours of tape every day or sixteen hours of tape or twenty-four hours of tape to make sure a citation is. And actually, it should be with law enforcement officials. Okay, and I'm not saying that there will be eight hours of tape every day or sixteen or twenty-four. But uh this is where these towns, and again, I'll say with a resident trooper has a leg, they have a leg up on this. Because they're able to establish this, and these were actually established primarily, um. If you read back on the statute and so on and so forth and see where it came from, that had to do with the red light cameras originally. Um, and. Reviewing those, they actually have, uh, you take a police department. Uh, just give you a, for instance, New Britain, because I was talking to someone from New Britain the other day. They have someone who reviews, that's their entire job, review those cameras. I'm not sure what Carrington is doing, I'll speak with the police chief down there, see what they're doing in Winston. I don't know if they're setting up cameras, so forth.
Okay, if I may, um. Have they, I'm not familiar with that law. Or, or the law, is it all public? Um, is it different on the state road, state highway versus a town road? It's, it's in the town limits or it's not the town limits?
No.
But there's a tractor that speeds up and down Bell and the Street a couple of times.
I don't wanna know about it, but uh. So, uh, again, as, as many of you have known, when I, when I saw this coming over the hill, I said, oh, this would be a great thing, this would be fantastic. And when they finally put the bill in. It's, it kind of uh limits us, and again, um. The next cog meeting, I'm going to be talking to uh, to the other selected, but. The, the primary problem is the review is there.
But did we sign this there, that could be, implies surveillance? Without.
Uh, no, we don't do that.
I'm just thinking, what does slow people down?
What slows, slows people down? A-actually, someone running radar and handing out tickets. So.
The water-based skirmish, well, because it's on.
The uh one oh seven Main Street. This, some, we talked about, uh. We've, uh, infrastructure has only gotten one bid back on that.
We, we uh asked for three. Uh, we have three, three people to bid on it. We have one sincere bid to uh that we can really work with. And the infrastructure committee made the recommendation to uh, uh. Pass it along and and get it, get it fixed to.
Right, and seven, you transfer station report. Um. For the last three months. We had the tonnage and so on and so forth, no reason to go through all this, but I can tell you the mirror tipping fees are not getting any cheaper. So. Uh, total expense for those three months was uh twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-three dollars and thirty-three cents.
Not including salary.
Salary, cell phone or electric. Okay, old business, thirty-five railroad street. Uh, this and I've been actually just act, acting as the point person here with Mr. Gillespie, and he says we are still waiting a final qualified bid from a general contractor.
Gillespie's too.
The one who's purchasing, right?
Another one's he might back away from it?
I don't have any, that question was asked, okay, I don't see any indication that he is, okay, backing away from it. Uh, he does have some questions, um. Uh, in my notes, he asked about sidewalks, it's something I've got to review, I actually got. A message, so I have to get back to him on that, and something I'll be speaking with, um. The uh other two selectmen with. Uh, insofar, we are still awaiting the survey from Matt Kiefer for the easement, so we have the two moving parts.
I have so much trouble with this.
So do I.
Yeah, Matt, this has been months, months. This is a survey that he had, so that's one thing, the, the other side with it. I, I, I don't understand the delay in closing on it, on it. You buy it and you get your prices, and it seems like a funny excuse.
And we'll agree with that, as a matter of fact, I have a, a, um. We've been uh using Emily Vale. Okay, but I also have a call in to our town attorney to see how we might be able to move this along.
Perhaps you want to call the attorney to work on the whole deal to begin with, they were very good.
Mm-hmm. Uh, he could, development update, basically give you, we're gonna have that walkthrough and then we're gonna kind of decide what they come up with. Uh. Pre-replacement, we get three bids?
I got uh two, the third one, uh. Wasn't interested, um, Salisbury Garden Center was uh for a. Two to three inch caliper, uh crimson maple with planting. Was five hundred fifty plus tax. Um, blue spade. Uh, was a verbal quote that just this morning, uh, three hundred fifty for material. And he wouldn't charge us the labor.
Yeah.
To actually plant it.
Okay. That Salisbury Garden Center, if we could get just something written. From like, uh, Blue Spade. And then we'll act upon it, but I'd like to have things down on paper before we act upon it. Um, Falls Village Parking Plan, thank you for bringing that to me, finally. Thank you, Steve, and uh thank you, Greg, uh. I would like you to look at your calendars for the next week or so. Or maybe early August, uh, because I'll be going the end of.
Those are the twenty seconds.
Yeah, I'll be going the uh. Twenty-second to the twenty-sixth, um. Let me know tomorrow, um, if you all check your calendars, if we have something where we could get together, um. Somewhere between the uh, the fifteenth and the nineteenth. Oh, wipe out the eighteenth from here.
That's way too late?
Yeah.
Oh.
And just email me tomorrow and then we'll, we'll put something together, because I have to, I have this calendar, but I wanna check tonight.
This is to uh, to review the park.
To review the parking plan.
Can we do it first thing in the morning? Can we commit to that?
I have no problem doing it first thing in the morning, does that work for you, Judy?
Um, killer, what are you talking about, six AM?
Uh, no, I think at four thirty.
No, I guess not.
Uh, no, eight thirty or.
Okay.
Second thing.
Alright, so we'll look, yeah, let's just, let me double check my calendar at home.
Yeah, we'll check today, don't know yet.
But we're looking at the week fifteen through the nineteenth. Good.
Probably not Monday, because we'll be putting other things back out of it.
Ah, that's true.
Uh, Wednesday's not good for me, so.
Okay. Well, let me look at Tuesday or.
I have anything in the morning on Thursday.
Okay. Okay, new business, tax rebates and consideration of approval suspension list, I have just one refund. Uh, for a hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents. I'll take a motion to uh. Refund that money.
I love it.
Second, all in favor?
Right.
And we'll sign off on it today. Right there, so that's. Our tax collector. Um. Let's get back to Matt Gallagher. Matt Gallagher's letter and I left a copy for our clerk. Dear Honorable Selectmen and Who's Titanic River Commission, to advise you that effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Resign my position as commission member alternate, excuse me, on the Who's Titanic River Commission. At this time, would like to convey my thanks to you. And the staff for allowing me to work and interact in an environment that was conducive to my learning and growing as a professional. I would especially like to thank you for the opportunity to, to participate. Uh, and contribute towards the protection of our vital uh waterways ecosystem for the Who's Tonk River. I feel that I have overcommitted to too many opportunities beyond my role. Uh, it's GMF, IWC, and coaching youth sports, I have three young children that we are raising and feel that. That we are raising and feel that the Who's Tonk River Commission is one of too many commitments that I cannot give a hundred percent to. Uh, I don't think that I am at the stage in our family's life to commit to the uh HRC. As more commitments I make, the more time I take away from my family. Once the kids are older, I will have the time to join additional civic duties. I know this is not what you wanted to hear, but my family comes first, and I agree with them on that. To everything and my priorities lie with them. Once again, thank you. And should you find it necessary to contact me, please do so. At your convenience, I remain. Uh, Matt uh Gallagher. Um, I'll take a motion to accept Matt's. Okay, uh, all favor? Uh, we move on to the second part. Which is the appointment. To uh of uh someone to fill that. And consider the appointment uh to the Who's Tonk River Commission as an alternate. Fill the vacancy of Matt Gallagher, and I have um. A message here from uh Wood Sinclair. Uh, dear first selectmen and other selectmen, I have recently asked uh Dick Keine to serve as my alternate as Falls Village representative. To the Who's Tonk River Commission, he enthusiastically responded, yes, whereupon I have arranged. Uh, for him to receive the necessary information, schedule, management plan, national park info, et cetera. Gives me great pleasure to submit his name for your uh appointment. Into the commission, because I wish to have two commissioners from each town. Sincerely, Ellery W Sinclair. I'll take a motion. Some more.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, twenty twenty five.
Twelve thirty one twenty four.
Twelve thirty one twenty four, it is, okay. I have, okay, I have. January one twenty five, this is. Okay. Our new business. Yes, that's our next. The ARPA funds, uh. I was going to present that also to the. Um, Board of Finance. Do um, do you wanna table that until I find out exactly what the funds are?
Um, I don't think we need to table. I just, uh. I mean, I think we can act. We have a thousand dollar to give to them.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we can act on that. I just was curious. I would like to know what.
Okay. So. Take a motion.
Motion to uh. Yeah, to.
Okay.
Up to one thousand?
Up to one thousand. That's your motion?
Yes.
So I'll second it. Okay, all in favor? Of course, this is going to, well, I want to apply for the federal uh. Bridge funds from the two bridges, the Cane Mountain Bridge and the Cobble Road Bridge. And where we would look at taking the money is out of line one, seven, oh. Two, six, four. Six, six, eight, nine. That's our bridge fund. And that would be. Uh, six thousand dollars. We do have a contract here. You have it in hand right there, as a matter of fact, uh. That we can sign off on and have them. Prepare those documents. Again, it's a hundred percent for those bridges. And it's not even reimbursable. It says as the bills come. They go right to the feds. Now that will have to be referred to town meeting because it's coming out of a nonrecurring capital fund. So I would take a uh motion to. Before I sign off on it, to refer it to town meeting.
Do we first go? Board of Finance and town meeting?
I believe we can go right to town meeting, which I don't think we need to go to the Board of Fin- Finance. No, okay. Too bad they're not meeting tonight. We could have got them up to okay it. We could have moved it. Okay. Alright, so we'll refer this to the Board of Finance, hopefully have it referred to town meeting.
No. Need the purpose in that. Uh, his point of finance has to put the purpose and the amount.
Right, and what it would be is to application for federal bridge funds for the Canaan Mountain Bridge. And the Cobble Road Bridge. Up to six thousand dollars. For application fees.
To be paid to Cardinal Engineering?
Cardinal Engineering. I'll get into that one too.
We want to um look at the other one too, Dave. Recommendation to Cardinal.
I would like to just research that a little bit more before we move on that and wanna see. How much funds we would have, but we make all special meeting. Regarding that. And uh. Pretty much do the same thing. Um, the planning and zoning fee ordinance. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. Uh, moved a little too fast there.
Some moves.
Second, all in favor? Steve, Greg, is there gonna be any more on the fees? A- any, any beyond what I was, we've been sent?
No, it's it's uh taped on as I mentioned to you that. On the original ordinance was a fee for on behalf of inland wetlands. Which cleaning the zoning did not update. That's the kind of figure out because it's not under review to.
Or that should come out exactly.
But it's not on here now.
It's not on there now.
Okay.
Did you compare it to the original ordinance? It's on the original.
Correct.
Some are proposed. So the board is.
I'm sorry, Doug, too. You're on enthusiasm. I apologize.
The board of, we may want to even as saying inland wetlands and oxygen, say mornings are not this, that's something.
Okay, alright, um. I'll make the, I'll make the motion that we uh. Take the fee schedule as proposed. Uh, by the uh Planning and Zoning Commission and um. We refer it to town meeting.
Second.
All in favor? So I'll have a couple of things for another town meeting. Okay. Moving along. One oh seven Main Street. Do we have, um? Have written estimates on that? Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and there's two.
No, there's just.
Just one, no, just one, and that's from.
Valley restoration.
That's it. Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot. Uh, if we can get that. And I will make a motion that we refer. To uh the Board of Finance and hopefully then to town meeting out of nonrecurring capital fund. I'll give you the number, ready? One, seven, oh. Two, six, three. Zero, five, four, one. For repair the roof.
What's the name of that account? One oh seven, one oh eight, maybe or something.
That's from oh seven, one oh eight, maybe. Thank you.
To repair one oh seven roof?
To repair one oh seven roof.
Up to.
Uh, well.
Have it with me.
Well, the the problem with up to was uh if they find. Why would it have to replace? It's gonna be a time and a place to replace that. If there's roofs. Yeah, but we gotta come up with a uh the roof problem with a roof and. Um, I don't know how we would adjust that, how. We certainly don't wanna pay him to do it if they're not gonna do it.
You up to?
I don't know what the up to would be.
The original amount was what? What was seven? I don't have it with me.
Twenty seven, two fifty.
So.
But there's also, um. Any sheening replacement will be determined. As time and material and as we uncover at a hundred twenty five dollars. So it's hard to.
Is it too much to say like thirty five?
Well, let's check to see how much we have in that. Account. Let's uh, I'll make a motion to table this. Until we get those exact figures.
That we have in our account?
Yes.
Okay.
So actually, it's uh. I have got the bridge as, well, yeah, thirty four thousand plus minus. With an additional six. After five first, so.
The the thing that I'm. Um, which in between is on the up to. Because we wanna make sure that. We are well within our means.
Yeah, right, I get it.
Okay, so let's, let's just, I'll make a motion to table that until we get. A little bit better figured on that, but I would like to move along on it.
Yeah, but we're just not getting any better.
No, it's not. Um. But I have a second to table it.
That's good.
All in favor? Alright, um. Discussion. Solar project committee, you pretty much.
That's kind of the rest of summer, summer break, uh, until after. I need more information and um. Uh, Michelle has to put it together for me and scan it until. It's been all got it. First things first, we have shared priority good. Beginning of the new fiscal year and the changeover to uh. So we'll get her space there and we'll just pick up on that one, uh. That's when she's complete with that.
And and the infrastructure committee, actually, we got our report pretty much, and that was to okay those expenditures.
Right, the only other, yeah, the, I guess if we wanna. Make it clear. Uh. We did recommend to the Board of Selectmen. To uh for a phase one. Assessments of the six town line bridges that are less than twenty feet.
Right.
That cost us two thousand each. So. That'd be a total of twelve thousand. Again, page from the bridge uh repair, now repairing capital. And then the only other thing was, uh, we would like to, uh. Move forward on a salt shed and uh some questions. That we need to ask, uh. Allied engineering. Good to get them on board uh as well.
Let's see. Any other business to come practically before the Board of Selectmen? The only thing that I uh. And I just pulled this down. Just for a matter of discussion, um. And. We probably should make this available somewhere, but Public Act twenty three seventy seven. It's a substitute Senate bill, eleven forty eight. Has to do with an act authorizing certain paling of black bear and prohibiting intentional feeding of potentially dangerous animals. As you know. We have a uh. A uh ordinance in town here regarding intentional uh feeding of bears. Uh, but uh. Right now, every time you uh give a call to D E P regarding bears breaking in. They uh. They do little more than say, well, give us a call if there's a real problem, and I think breaking in, and we've had a couple incidents, so. Uh, several people have asked about it. And again, I'm not going to read the entire bill, but uh. Uh, we probably should refer people to this and actually make it. Uh, make it available to them. So.
I I I did have a question.
Yes.
If there's more comments about that. Uh, there was a, there was a, an attachment with um. The last. Uh, minutes, um, twenty twelve Connecticut General Statute, title sixteen, public service companies, chapter. Three, three, telegraph, telephone, eliminating. Power and Water Company, section sixteen through thirty four, rights and adjourned properties. Why was that included?
That was actually included, that had to do with the tree warden. Oh, okay, okay, and if you read further down the statute, and I, I, I know I had to put my glasses on to read that, but it had to do with uh their. Obligations uh relative to tree removal. Uh, any other public comment?
Uh, on the, I have two questions first. One on economic development. You explain a little bit more when you say cog. You're waiting for them to come through, they're gonna review. What are you looking?
What I was.
They looking cool. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we had spoke months ago about this and and um. We, we have been working with their community, excuse me, Commission on Economic Development. Okay, uh, SEDs as they call it now, and um, the idea when they um hired this new economic. Development person down at the cog, Rista Malanka. Was to take a look at the northwest corner as a whole and see what each town had to offer. And I thought it would be, um. Probably in our best interest. To see where they were going with things until we actually formed an Economic Development Commission. Here in town or committee. More correctly, um, this walkthrough is going to be with the Connecticut Main Street Promise. Uh, and they are gonna take a look at what we have here in town. As a matter of fact, they're going through every town within the cog. And they're doing a two to three hour walk, um. Minus uh Tarrington and Winstead, I've been doing all the other towns. I see what they have in town for businesses and so forth, and sort of give a free assessment to us. And um, in getting that assessment, Doug, then I thought maybe that would give us some direction rather than forming a committee. And I know, you know, the grassroots is always the best. But uh, there's times, you know, it doesn't hurt to listen to the pros either, so we can either take or leave whatever they do, but. Um, I know it's been a while. Since we initially talked about it, but it's been a while in getting this group formed and and getting this done.
I can agree with it. I think it's probably a good point more on a long term basis. Regionally, yes, let's pick from everybody's brain and get whatever we can from it. But in the process, I think we're missing quite a bit. We have a very effective. Citizen group right now that's. Digging into grants everywhere. I know there was just twelve grants that were just sent out. To the appropriate committee board, whatever. And I don't think anybody replied. I'm not sure anybody's jumped on it.
Well, I'll reply. We're doing a cyber.
And the historical.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't get a chance to answer that.
My point being that in the short term. I think a commission from the town or in the town. Could be very active in getting things up and running, still using the cog as a long term. Platform or whatnot. I think we're missing out. I think we're missing deadlines. I think we're missing opportunities. By waiting. Eight months into it, I think we need to take it. We do well on our own. This town has done very well.
No question about it, Doug. And the, the thing also with them is they're, they're going to look at some short term. Fixes. I don't wanna use the term fixes, but um. Suggestions.
Well, peak and course, it's. I know I gave you copies of the uh, this is the Salisbury.
Yeah, the Salisbury one.
Alright. I just wanna make sure you have it.
We have, we have.
Yeah.
Alright, keep it anyway.
And uh.
The top copy, sorry, is the actual, uh. I only have a couple. Anybody wants? The top one is the actual agreement form that the town of Griswold put together.
Okay, Griswold, we don't have.
Yeah, and I think. And I agree with you again, Dave, in some respect about. Getting a lawyer involved and checking it all out, but I think you could really dig into Salisbury. That thing is tight and legally, I mean, that was the lawyer that wrote it without a doubt. And we're not too far off from their structure. Bigger town, bigger town, of course, but. The bottom line is they're just trying to get everybody that's either an employee. A uh, a board member, a commission member, a consultant. To agree to the plan, which is really just. The town's business is number one, first and foremost.
I'll tell you, I'm in total agreement with you, Doug. Uh, total one hundred, uh, because I've signed more than one code of ethics, as you probably. Uh, total one hundred, uh because I've signed more than one code of ethics, as you probably could have figured out. Okay, and I am in a hundred percent agreement with this, I just wanna make sure we have the right thing going out there. Okay, and um. I, again, I'm going to suggest to the other selectmen here that they hop on that state office of state ethics, again, only takes you. Forty minutes to do forty-five minutes. And it is quite comprehensive, of course, it does speak about things on a state level. Okay, but they're applicable here.
Yeah, I agree, I think it would be wise of us to maybe establish a committee to try to get this. Up and running, it's a lot of work, you start digging through legalities and whatnot. You know. It's gonna take some time to get that done, however, again, using the Salisbury form. I would call Curtis Rand and just said, you mind if we up the pace? But it's excellent, it's excellent.
And there's the old axiom, as you know, there's no sense in reinventing the wheel.
Well, exactly, and. The pieces that are missing for us right now, if somebody wanted to file a complaint with you guys about a violation of whatever. There is no process set up. To take that complaint, to review it, to either resolve it or do something with it. That's a chunk that has to be incorporated, so you go back to the. Older one at Louro, which is pretty good. For the selectmen. But it doesn't cover all commissions, all boards, all people, and it doesn't offer a procedure to really. Tear into it if there is a complaint, because at the end of the day is what it's about, if you don't resolve these things. You're failing in the number one tool that this thing is supposed to have, which is to make the town people. Feel like they can trust their own government, that's what it's all about.
If you go back to the, uh, and it may, you probably were on the website for the Office of State Ethics there, uh. Because you've been do- doing some reading up on it, as you see, there's always two people also as members of those. Committees, so to speak, one is the one to take the complaints, and the other one is to establish.
Yeah.
The, the uh code of ethics, so there's an ethics keeper, if you will.
Yeah, and as you get into the uh, the larger towns or smaller cities even, they have boards of that.
Exactly, exactly, but I don't think we're to that point.
You know where to go there, I think, I do, but uh. One question, just sort of in the realm of all this. Let's just say hypothetically. One of you had to recuse yourself and backed out. If you two, the other two had to vote and there's a tie, how do you resolve that?
You know what, I wanna tell you, we haven't got to that yet and I don't have an answer, how do you like that?
I mean, it's a serious question because.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I, I can, I can tell you from a personal standpoint, as, as uh Greg will remember, okay, not running out great here, but he'll remember that. Every vote that had to do with the whose time you service bureau and funding and so forth, I always recuse myself. From the, from the vote, because. Again, I'm uh current. You know, president of the board, right, just as I remain on the board, I'll never make a decision on how much money we, we decide to give them.
Right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, it's something to dig into, I think, hopefully we never come to that, but what would we do if we do?
Ah, no, 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 no. Those are cross fingers. Cross fingers. Alright. I'm sorry.
I just wanna. Are you still in public comment anymore? Oh, I have a couple things, one, the treasurer's report, it's not actually ninety nine, ninety eight point three, it's ninety nine point four seven, I want to select ninety nine point eight seven. It's in ninety eight point three, is that okay?
Uh, I've got, oh, twenty twenty one, and I looked at the wrong one, alright, yes, it's ninety nine point four seven, I looked at the lower one, thank you for that. Okay. So we're actually higher.
So I'll, I'll put that in there.
Yes.
I'll talk for sure, just a couple notes. During Henry's. Time, you guys did a code of ethics?
No. We actually talked about it. I don't, I don't remember, and I don't see a copy of it anywhere. So I've gotta admit, I don't. I don't recall Greg. And I don't have a copy of it either.
That one was done.
Yeah.
Um. We. You have the answer, I'm sure these, I'll just remind, did we apply for the emergency management grant up to five thousand dollars? And for the re- review on that vision thing, I thought that the traffic person or. Law enforcement person just had to review the clip of the person who was speeding. Not a. I mean, I can't imagine any town having a police officer take eight hours paid. To review a video, or we're still doing the food waste, and why would contractor for James Gillespie be holding up the sale?
I have no idea about the last one, okay, the G C, this is G C, okay, general contractor. Now let's back up, uh, we are no longer doing the food waste.
Okay.
Okay, we ended that at the end of June. We are now transporting it over to Atama Farms. Okay, but we actually stopped because we had a bear attack.
It's a week for left.
Why are you gonna contain a, if you prevent it? I don't understand, we just spend all this time and you got people involved and starting to really bring things and they. Into it, and often you come down there, you see a sign, we had a bear, so no, no longer.
Well, I'm gonna have the town crew on that, the, on the bear cage. I can tell you that we created the bear cage, uh, when Greg? A year ago, yeah, so we just, we just need to reinforce that bear cage.
Then we'll go back to do it?
Yes.
But it still is being tall.
Right, and you can take it to Atama Farms at any time.
Yeah. Individuals can take it right down.
And just throw it in through the gate.
So we collected them.
We're, we're, we're collecting it now and taking it down, but if people want right now. Uh, Shamu has told us there's no problem, and even if you don't wanna take it to the transfer station, you can drop it off.
Do they have a bear problem?
Do they?
Yeah.
They just have an open pile there.
Never had a bear.
They never had a bear problem that I know of.
They have the buzzards, the buzzards.
The buzzards, sorry, and I'm sorry, you have a, another question Denise?
Um. I thought the policeman just reviewed the.
Emergency Management Grant we could not apply for, okay, because the first selectman had not. Been involved in taking certain classes. That would be the past. First selection. I've already been through two drills with the uh. Uh, with our emergency management director, so we will be able to apply for that five thousand dollars next year.
Okay, is it a clip or is it eight hours of video?
What's that?
The vision something.
I, you know what, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't exactly know, I know that the red light cameras. Are um, they are clips. I don't know about the speed. Cameras.
Couldn't imagine it being a hell of a.
Well, I, well, the bigger cities, yeah. The bigger cities, because you're not just doing one, you know, we're, we're thinking about just one camera, let's say. You take a, a city like New Haven, how many cameras you think they have, how many intersections they have?
But don't they just take a picture of the speeder and send it to you, like?
No, there's actually, uh, with the speeding, there's actually, uh, uh, to the best of my knowledge, there's tracking. Okay, so you see the approach and then you see the, the, the picture, okay?
Speed limit, digital things, said, oh, you go thirty five.
Unfortunately, in my lifetime, I, my, my experience with those has been that people go faster, so you think. They can go faster, but that's.
Of course you get the smiling face, I thought that was how you.
That's not embarrassed, the bucket, the one that has the police lights on, yeah.
But here in state weddings is nothing but flashy amber. So. I mean, it's something that we can look into in, in the future, but again, uh, the way the statute is written. You know, your, your hands are kind of tied if you're a, a police department with, with a. Excuse me, a town without a police department. So, cuz I know the resident trooper towns are doing it, but, yes.
So, um, just.
Greg Marlowe, by the way.
I mean, it's very effective, and you have a great relationship with Troopy, but every time I ever call and stuck in, they. They literally almost stood up there at nineteen.
They've been doing that.
In the diligence and, and staying on top. You know, rotating around, right, so unfortunately, it's not good, Belgian Street, you don't go on ninety six feet during, we go on. The state rule.
Eight twelve, okay, and, and I, I will tell you, I will give you this. I will give you this warning, every time. That they have repaid Route seven, in my memory and when I was on the job, you could sit up by Undermountain Road. Okay, and write your month's worth of tickets in one night. But wait a minute, there was, there's no quota, you, you write as many tickets as you want.
So you know it's that after Belgian Street was.
Yeah, well, once I.
You know what, uh, just while I was thinking about it, I saw like the ton of Sheffield. Put out a bunch of road, they got a grant, and they put out the different roads that they did, speed enforcement now, something like that, coming from the town website, might be really cool too. Just, just so everybody knows, hey, as a town, we, we hear you, we're acting, and. Uh, I got word from Troopy that they did a speed trap on.
There's no such thing as a speed trap, by the way. Okay. But, but the uh, the nice thing about Sheffield, I, cuz I've been caught. The uh, the nice thing about Sheffield is they, they received the federal grant. To do that, and we can't, we can't get a federal grant.
The point of it's not about the money, the point of it is communication to the citizens. So, it's, it's, it's the same thing.
And then the problem is, you know, uh, making sure that those people are um, law enforcement is committed to those areas at that time.
No, what I'm saying is, uh, so you, the troop commander said, hey, we did Route sixty three, just put it out there, that's all. Just so people know, just, I think a lot of it is, they speed on our particular roads that we live on, and we just assume nobody cares. Nobody did. Unfortunately. What I'm looking at here, right? Well, who gets the money if you can't collect your speeding stuff?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna give you some a little historically, okay? In the old days, okay, it used to be broken down. In thirds. And the way it was broken down in thirds is. So much, let's say it was a seventy five dollar fine, twenty five dollars went to the centralized infractions bureau. That's the people who print the tickets, and if you send a ticket in and you don't, uh, you know. Uh, don't contest it, you don't go to court. Okay, they just process it, so they got twenty five dollars. The next twenty five dollars on that seventy five dollar ticket. Went to the court system. Okay, just in case they had to adjudicate whatever. And it went to uh, to the best of my recollection, it didn't go to your particular G A, but it went. To the entire court system, uh, don't quote me on that, but I believe that's where it went. The last third of it went to the town. Okay, no matter what town you were in, so if I was running radar. Years ago on Route sixty three by the. Holland Beck Club. Okay.
Got caught there too.
And it was a seventy five dollar fine, just to make, make it all easy, it was twenty five, twenty five and twenty five, but that doesn't exist anymore. Everything, everything goes now to the state. And that, and that actually changed soon thereafter, that actually changed under um. It was in between Ella Grasso's term and um. Bill O'Neill's term, that they actually changed it. For those of you who remember.
I haven't, we're leaving the chairs as they're.
And you know what, I'm gonna leave them just the way they are, because tomorrow night at seven o'clock. Yeah, I have, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we're not adjourned, I apologize. Told you to get up.
Wanted to uh. I just wanted to say, actually, it was under the uh, Bridge and Infrastructure Committee portion. Uh, that uh, Tim and the uh. And the crew went over on the Cobble Road, put quite a bit of material in there. Uh, and did a hell of a job. Uh, the uh, we had two and a half inches of rain last week in. Four days, I think, or three days. There's still a lot of beaver activity, uh, and it only caught, the, the wire came up and only coated the road by about two or three inches. A couple of spots, so. Uh, much appreciated.
Thank you, Tim. If there is no other business to come before us, everyone enjoy a cooler evening than it was during the day. Thank you for your attendance, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Thank you.